Four thirty, the meeting will come to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. And please join us for the pledge.
Safe there first?
What?
Why safe there first?
We're already standing in those crates.
I can do it either way.
I just leave.
Let's leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, could you pray first?
Please. Most gracious heaven, Father, we just thank you for the day and the blessings you've given to us. We ask, Father, continued prayers for our soldiers, men and women overseas and at home. Also for our first responders, Father, blessings upon them. We ask, Father, that we're coming to that spring of the year where our farmers will once again be going into the fields and we just wish them a good planting season and safe planting season. We ask all these things in your son's precious name, amen.
Amen. Any public comments?
Can we do the agenda?
Okay. Some darn guy wants to go first, so.
So we need to, yep, we need to move the airport up to H.
From L. Any other changes?
Airport.
Yes.
I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
With the agenda as amended.
Or?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Airport.
Don't you get it?
Do we get? We get.
Thanks for moving me up on the agenda. We just have a EEA chapter meeting tonight at six o'clock, so. So getting through here and then back, that'll work out better, obviously, so. And the packet there, on the airport agenda there and stuff. The advisory minutes were in the packet that was sent out. I can spend some time going through that. We just, we meet every month. We got another meeting coming up on Wednesday this week to continue on the stuff that was in the agenda, the last couple of meetings. We've been getting some bids on some stuff at the airport. One of the things we were talking about is improving the water quality, terminal stuff there. Seems like an easy task to get some bids on improving the water quality, but we found that where the water comes into the terminal, there's some big valves that are stuck. So we can't turn the water off, so we're getting some bids on repairing those valves and at this point, we don't have any firm bids on that. We do have bids on replacing a water, getting the water softer and the equipment on behalf of that. But the last advisory meeting, it was advised by the group that instead of having separate units in the terminal and then over in corporate buildings there, that maybe we could modify the plumbing and just have one unit to serve both units. So that's what we're moving ahead with and looking at doing that, so. But the problem that we have in the, in the, in the terminal is that they're big gate valves, kind of like what you would have for overhead sprinkler system. So they built it with, I think that in mine fifty-five years ago, and the valves are, they just need to be fixed so we can turn the water off to different units and modify it to put in for, you know, water treatment there because we have to handle the water. Other than that, you can go through the minutes there. I don't know if you have any questions on that. You know, we're in the process of looking at renegotiating the land leases, the mowing contract, the airport manager contract. We have that on those items in this last month. So we're going to talk about those things at advisory meeting tomorrow, on Wednesday, or tomorrow. But also in that packet was some data from last month through February on fuel transactions at the airport. We had six hundred and forty-six gallons of Jet A sold and about eleven, twelve hundred gallons of hundred low lead sold between Three Point and the county. I just looked today. We had two jets in yesterday and we had a jet in earlier. We sold over a thousand gallons of Jet A so far this month through yesterday. Compared to last year, we sold three hundred and sixty gallons, so, so a good increase from a year ago. And we've sold seven hundred and twenty gallons of a hundred low lead. And last year, we sold about eight hundred and fifty gallons of hundred low lead for the whole month, so. Depending on what the weather does in the next ten, twelve days, we should surpass that also. Financials are in there, expenses that we paid somewhere in February. So they're kind of self-explanatory. If you've got any questions on any of those. Go over that. Then I just had kind of the report for February in those minutes there. We ended up with, oh, nine days out of February where no fuel was sold just because the weather's bad. It's, you know, snow, did quite a bit of snow plowing in February. Some of the snow was kind of heavy, so we had to use a big snow blower and blow them over the lights. But that's, some years we blow a lot, some years we don't, so it just depends on what happens. So I don't know, if you have any questions on that, particular activities, I just kind of outlined kind of what happens each day. At the bottom there, a spiraling corp is supposed to come to redo our meters, check the meters on our fuel farm, change all the filters and just kind of re-certify it for the year. They're actually coming tomorrow morning today to. Wrote this, we hadn't had a firm date. They were waiting on for some filters. The bid on that's about twenty-four hundred dollars to do that. We also, consumers, we have some old equipment that's on Eli Highway that was decommissioned and but it still had power to it, so consumers did come and deactivate that equipment. So we have to get that equipment removed on Eli Highway. It's actually in the ditch, so we'll be looking at doing that. And I think everybody's aware, but our bids were came in on the airport taxiway reconstruction and we awarded a bid, a little bid on that, so. And that was in the packet too, so. I don't know, any other questions or?
I have a, I have just a question. I know that our airport out there can handle larger airplanes coming and going. How large of an airplane can it, can it handle?
We get small jets in. What I would classify as business jets, usually they're ten people and under. If we had a longer runway, we're at a little over five thousand feet. If you get up to about six thousand, we can bring in a jet that would hold up to maybe nineteen people, so.
But you can't do that nineteen now, yeah?
No, they wouldn't come in just because the runway's too short. Usually they want six thousand feet or a little longer.
Okay, but you can handle up to ten.
Yeah, ten to twelve. The jets that were in yesterday were eight and ten. Number, normally when they come in, it's usually two or three. You know, yesterday, one jet was in, had two people on, dropped them off. And then the other jet that came in, well, the first jet that dropped them off, they left in Wisconsin. Second jet come in to pick up the ones they dropped off earlier and fly them in back, so. They both bought fuel, so that was a good thing, so. But a lot of times, the jets aren't full. They're bringing two or four unless it's a family thing. Sometimes once in a while, you know, it's a funeral and, you know, the jet's full of people and stuff. But normally it's smaller groups, so ten and hundred.
Okay, ten hundred.
Smaller jets, yeah, so. And that, and that all depends on the weather, if it's, if it's wet, if the runways are wet, they restrict it further just because it's.
Then they would have to go on to Lansing or Saginaw?
Yeah, yeah, Lansing probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
On the wells that Tri-Terra was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I guess if you could explain a little bit to us, was it, things that were, when you came in and spoke, there was, changed the tanks out, they'd found some.
Right, let me.
This is all stemming?
Yeah, let me give you the history in that. So we put in the new fi- fuel farm, which is operational January twenty-four. And we have to remove the old fuel tanks, which were north of the, the corporate, they're kind of west of the terminal. So that was done in September, October. So they removed the underground storage tanks and part of that is, is you have to take soil samples at the time they remove the tanks. They take one at each end of the tank. Then there was underground piping that went up to the fuel station that would disperse the stuff. So I think they took, I remember I, maybe eight or ten soil samples at that time. They set those in, Tri-Terra set those in, and everything under the tanks and everything going up to the fuel, to the fence, basically, where the tarmac is. There was four sites there that showed some contamination of Jet A, not a hundred low lead, just Jet A. So part of that is the Michigan MBAT says, okay, now you need to put in some little test wells, okay? And they were going to put in five test wells or six. Ended up, they came out and they put those in. They put one in the parking lot to the north. And the whole idea of the test wells is to kind of do a circle around where those, those items were found. And then they can see if, if it's contained, so they, they put these little test wells in. They, they're only fifteen feet deep, okay? Soil samples come out, they were clean, they didn't show anything on them. Twelve feet of sand and one of the clay, three feet of blue clay, which is a good thing. All the wells were the same, all twelve feet of sand down to five feet or three feet of blue sand or blue clay. Instead of doing six, it was, it was supposed to be one to go deeper to thirty feet. But when we found all five of them that they drilled initially were the same, they go, well, no use going down, you know, another twelve feet in heavy clay, it's all going to be the same. So anyway, so we did five. They put in covers on them and cemented them into the parking lot. They put one in the ramp and the rest are in grass areas. So they're supposed to come out three to four weeks after they drilled those. They pumped them out so the water was clear, plenty of water in each of the holes because of high water table. So they'll be back, I anticipated before the end of the month. They'll take water samples of all those and have that tested. And then depending on the results of that, they will probably take water samples over once a quarter for maybe a year and see if anything changes. So most likely, that filling station was there since nineteen eighty-two. Or if some Jet A got spilled on the ground and it rained.
Rained in Washington.
And the grass didn't die or anything, but it, you know, it could have got into that. And that's where the sampling came from, so we'll see, hopefully, you know, there won't be anything. Luckily, it's all clay underneath. Wells are quite deep there. We have a six inch well. I think it's two or three hundred feet deep, so. It isn't like nothing's going to penetrate the clay, so. So that's kind of, that's, that's all about, so.
Excellent. I just wanted to explain so everybody was clear of what went on out there, why they did it.
Right, yeah, that's just a follow-up. So Three Point McDonald Air had the fuel farms. We also had the insurance fund through the underground storage for the state of Michigan. So there's a million dollars liability in case they have to do anything farther than that, which we don't anticipate, but we didn't anticipate there would be anything on the front end either, so you just never know, so. But the tanks, those tanks in the ground, the lines have been there since nineteen eighty-two, so it's a long time, so.
Does the county own enough land that they could extend the, the runways if there was a demand for it?
We would, we, we would, we, there is additional land to the east, okay? But ideally, it would be nice if we owned some more ground because of where the equipment would sit, I think, for lighting and everything farther out. I think we have enough ground to extend it because eight hundred feet's not very long. And we probably got thirteen hundred feet that, that the county owns there, so. So, I mean, that could be a possibility. Once you get a little longer runway, then you get maybe some other possibilities of cargo or, you know, stuff like that where they have a little bigger airplanes coming in and load out, so.
Is there a market for cargo to come into and out, in and out of there at this time?
We've had calls on it in the past, wondered if we had anything in the works. So if there was something in the works, maybe you'd get more interest, you know? But we've had calls on it, asked if we were. Your stuff is shipped out every day around the area, you know, so. It's either.
It's going to be an interesting use for that airport because it's ideally located to have some.
Right, centrally located, yeah. And what's good about that is, is, you know, anything that would come in on a regular basis would probably buy a lot of fuel, you know?
Yeah, it's interesting.
Side to side, so. You know, I mean, there might be somebody that would be interested. They might want to have a facility there. They'll let bigger hangars so they could, you know. But at this point, I don't know of anything. In the past, we have had calls regarding that, so.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
I see a couple of people snuck in after I asked for a public comment. Anybody else have a public comment? Okay. Now administrators report.
Okay, I've got just.
Under.
We got to do the consent.
Oh, okay. Anybody want to take anything out of the consent?
I'll go ahead and move this consent calendar support.
Moved by George, supported by Tim to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
BSNA, motion carried. Now we go to administrators' report.
Okay, so largely we're just doing anything that's asked of forensic auditors as well as ALI at this time. March is the time of year for our Workings Comp Audit, so I'm starting really to get into the weeds on that to make sure that they have everything that they need for the year. In your packets, you should have the Me Angry invitation for the Heartland MMP group. So that is our eight county region. At the next meeting on Friday, we will be officially setting our committee. And so that next meeting after that, on April twenty-fifth, we will be just inviting all commissioners from the eight counties to come together and ask any questions on what that would look like, so you can see the team that's really working on building that plan. So if you are interested in that, let me know by Friday because I need to bring those numbers with me when I go. After a little break, just with the chaos of everything, we are back into negotiations with our bailiff and security unions. We were able to meet again today. I think we did make some headway. We had scheduled mediation that was planned. We were able to meet without the mediator. We probably likely in the future, the next month or two, will be meeting, sitting down again with a mediator. And then for staffing, we do have, we are accepting applications till the end of the month for seasonal workers for Parks and Rec. And Terry had a retirement in her department, and so we've had some adjustments and to have just hired a part-time staff for her, so she is fully staffed once again. So things are going well and moving right along.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Sheila? Nope. George, do you want to start off on your commissioner reports?
Oh, sure. On the tenth, I attended the Hamilton Township meeting, the first one that I attended. Their township hall is almost ready to go. A few little add-ons and whatevers and they're going to be able to have a little opening. I don't know when that's scheduled for. Do you know, Tom?
I don't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you settled it when I was there.
But it's town.
Yeah, it's very nice. Last time I was there, they didn't have it painted and the rooms weren't finished, the bathrooms weren't finished. It's all done now. The kitchen's pretty well done, so it's really, it's really pleasant.
We actually just got occupancy from that, so.
Yeah, kudos to Tony for giving them an occupancy. So, and they, they went over their budget for the year and, and solidified that. Then the next, I headed out to North Star and typical meeting. They were also working on their budget and they had a public hearing and they adopted that, their budget for the year, so. Not too much else was happening. They did have a person there inquiring about being able to put a bid in in mowing of their cemetery. Other than that, there was still talk about the Blake problems in North Star, and that's an ongoing thing. And so that was that on that one. Leave, that would be all I have for now.
Tim?
On March thirteenth, I went to the mental health meeting and this gal gave a talk on fetal alcohol syndrome. I don't know how they get these numbers. She said one in twenty children are affected by prenatal alcohol exposure. There's one thing that hurts the recording of it or treatment of it is there's a stigma because no mother wants to admit that they're hurting their baby. Also fetal alcohol syndrome has similar characteristics to other health problems. So it, it, it's hard to diagnose. Again, I don't see how they get these statistics. Half of the pregnancies are unplanned. So that means that the woman, you know, the first month or so doesn't know she's pregnant, so maybe she's more liable to, to drink. What I got out of it is you shouldn't drink at all, but, but obviously the more you drink, the more it hurt the baby. But even if you go like, like one tube or, or something, it can do things.
Okay, Steve?
On the sixth, I was here for the kickoff of the Yo and Yo forensic audit. Came in, got everything rolling with that. I believe everything from the updates I've received. They're working well with our staff and getting the information that they need so that they can continue. You know, no, no idea when that will be done, but the updates I've got is they're working on it. On the tenth, Dave and I were in Riverdale for a legislative luncheon that we were, it was an invite only from the Michigan Farm Bureau and the Michigan Soybean Association were the ones that invited us to that. And you had legislators from all over, congressmen, United States representatives or representatives from their office anyhow, senators. It was a nice luncheon and a nice visit. Everybody got up and spoke. We had commissioners there from Isabella County as well because it was a tri-county thing. Apparently they have this yearly. That was the first time I'd been to that. But it went well and it was nice to get to visit with all kinds of people from, that are in local government, state and, and local government, so that was a good thing. That evening, I went to, started out at New Haven, New Haven. Actually was surprised Dave showed up at my New Haven meeting. I wasn't expecting to see him there, but I was at New Haven. I was only able to stay a short period of time because if I can, New Haven and Newark are always on the same night and they're right down the road from each other, so. Built on Buchanan Road, so I gave a little report at New Haven and then they, I was able to get done and, and able to get down to Newark. Stayed with Newark until they got into their budget meeting and, you know, basically said the same thing. Just gave them a little update of what's going on with the county. They, their meetings are, you know, just going over their local stuff that they've got going on and Newark is, I don't know if they've contacted you, Terry, at all. They are working with BSNA. It's new to them and this is a fairly new board, a lot of turnover in their board. So I did mention to them if they, about you and, and maybe some people from Woodhill, if they, they also mentioned like Fulton Township has Woodhill come in and help them with some of their, yeah.
But we had a lot of conversation with Newark and they're coming on this. It's just a learning.
It's, it's very much, but you know, they're new and they really are focusing on wanting to do this right and make sure that they have all their ducks in a row. So I'm really impressed with them and their, you know, thoroughness and so that was, you know, they, they talked a lot about the BSNA stuff. The next night, the eleventh, I was in Elba Township. Elba was working through some of the projects they have going. They're going to be getting started with the Parks and Rec grant and ordering the, all of the supplies they were issued. You guys approved the, the grant there, so they were working on getting the picnic tables and the trash receptacles and the other supplies they need to get the parks going. They were also working on trying to get some of their roads plotted out in the new part of the cemetery that they just acquired, the land, so that they can work on getting the markers, the official markers and things out there, but they got to get that all laid out. And then today I was here for the union negotiations with the bailiffs.
And that's? That's all?
That's all.
Okay.
All that I need to talk about.
Hey, I went to Bethany Township for a meeting on the eleventh and that's all I did for the last week, but I did want to bring to everybody's attention that there's quite a few things going on this time of the year. I think I mentioned some of them, but in case I missed somebody, there's the Lansing MAC Conference, the seventh, eighth, ninth of April. Let me know if you want to go the next week. There's Heartland, which is with Sheila here, and that is on the, what is that, twenty-fifth? Yeah, twenty-fifth. And and there's Conservation District meeting this coming Friday at eight o'clock. If there's a commissioner that would like to attend that, that's a good thing to attend. That's farmers. Has to do with agriculture, has to do with a lot of stuff really, the water, the.
Lots to do with.
Yeah, I mean, we're agriculture here, so.
The lakes, the rivers, all that stuff.
Yeah, and so it's very important to kind of tune into that. And then I'm a shoe extension, that's the board I'm on. They do a lot of stuff also with agriculture and that's on the seventeenth of April too, at four o'clock in the afternoon. If anybody would like to go, we can ride together, unless there's three of us, you two can, two can go and I can go by myself. But these are agriculture things, things that they talk about. One of the things that we learned from the last meeting that we went, Steve and I went to, to Conservation was this new tick that's out, that's got a hard shell and it's white and how it will affect animals. And plus they have the old tick. And I was trying to think, what else did they talk about? Do you remember? That was one of the big things.
Yeah, that was kind of the, I guess if there was a big thing, it was about the ticks and as we're coming into spring, it's going to be tick season again and this new one and how it's going to affect livestock and things, so.
Yeah.
Of course you got the lunatics in Lansing.
Forget about those.
Well, you know, one thing too, they said that if we. Well, you know, one thing, too, they said that if we, the problem with having to be spooked, spiders or whatever, is because we don't have the winters that we used to have. So the good part is we've had some really cold weather and then we had some snow on top of that, so maybe that'll help a little bit. I don't know. But I'm real concerned about the ticks. Um, I'm concerned with the animals, cats and dogs and raccoons and, you know, there's lots of little critters out there, probably birds and everything, so. Anyway, it's gonna be a white tick with a hard shell. And if you see one, you might want to contact Conservation District. Let them know because they're trying to, trying to keep this under control.
Okay. I went to a few meetings. I went to LEPEC. Don't ask me what that's for, but it's, uh, it's the law enforcement in preparation. And I, I went to the Alma City Commission. They're got a lot of road projects this year. And I went to Arcade Township just because it's not too far from my place. But I didn't know that they changed the time, so I showed up late. Six o'clock. I thought it was seven, so they were just about done. They let me in anyway. And I, I went to Seville. They're battling with the people that, uh, build it. A, uh, in the contract, it was up for a hundred feet for the well and then up going a hundred and sixty-two feet. And they, they don't want to pay for that extra.
Good luck on a well.
Well, they got the well there.
Luck.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Is that deep or you mean a hundred and sixty feet deep?
Yes.
We just throw some dirt down there, don't you?
Put it back in. I forgot to mention, um, Supervisor Howard Whaley asked that I announce to everyone who's here and to the board in particular about, I mentioned it last month, but April 5th, Saturday, April 5th, is their ribbon cutting ceremony for their addition, which we helped fund with the ARPA funds that we gave. That starts at 10:00 AM, lasts till two, but, uh, George got them to dial it down. Eleven o'clock is when they're planning the actual ceremony where they're gonna cut the ribbon and do the official thing. So eleven o'clock, if anybody can be there, is the Kennedy Target. Uh, that's at the corner of Roosevelt and Baldwin. Yes, if you come down to fifty-seven, go east to Baldwin and then south a mile up.
Okay, and that's on April the?
Yeah, Saturday, April the 5th.
Okay, if that's all the commissioner and administrator reports, we'll go on to new business. Parks and Rec, John?
Um, so Gresham County Parks and Rec Department, um, currently have two work trucks that are used by our maintenance guys, Josh and Ron, on a daily basis. One's a plow truck and the other one is just a, a truck that they use daily. After completing my first year this last week, um, I realized that there's a, thank you, yes. Uh, I made it, yes. Um, I realized that, uh, using my personal vehicle, um, checking the parks puts a lot of wear and tear and miles, um, on it. Uh, and it's roughly about five thousand miles, um, I put on it this year for work. Um, so, um, I brought up to the Parks and Rec Board last month about the possibility of purchasing a new vehicle, new work truck. For, out of our general fund because I am so new, it wasn't budgeted for, for this year. And this truck would be used obviously daily, checking the parts, um, going to get water samples, meeting people for quotes, whether it's for a new project or repair. Um, concession stands and then just making sure all the parks have all the supplies that they need. Uh, so I listed, uh, five quotes that I got, um, in your packet there. Um, and the Parks and Rec Board, uh, recommended staying local, um, with Alma Button Baker, which was around, uh, which was forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. And that was with a, um, ninety-six hundred dollar discount on top of that, or that's including a ninety-six hundred dollar discount, so. For a truck. Yep, forty-nine. Eighty, yep. And I attached in your packet the window skipper, so it's got all those safety features. That you can imagine, so.
I hear motion to approve.
I so moved that we approved the purchase of the, um, twenty-two-five Silverado fifteen-hundred crew cab for the Parks and Recreation from Benton Baker, uh, in Alma.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to approve the bid for forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for Benton Baker in Alma. All those in favor, say aye. What was name? John, you got a new truck.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks, John. Congratulations, son. Yeah, good job on the parks. Still, you're doing a great job, buddy.
Who went on down Healthy Pine River, Chuck Sandro? Is that close?
Thank you for the opportunity to meet, uh, with you. We try to give an annual update to the, uh, health of the river. Um, to the county, to our cities, our villages and townships. And, um, I know that you have a packet in front of you from Healthy Pine River. Thank you, Angie, for including that. And I would say rather than regurgitating everything in the packet, some real quick comments on the first page regarding, um, our priorities. River, we just did our twentieth year of water testing. Um, Healthy Pine River has funded the last ten or eight years at about fifty thousand dollars in cost. We put a twenty-year summary as to the condition of the river on our website. And, uh, things have not gotten better by and large. It's still heavily contaminated with excessive nutrients, primarily phosphorus and nitrogen and heavy E. coli, um, which is the human health hazard component that we've been concerned about for some time. Please holler if you have any questions. We have, um, continued to work with both the city of St. Louis. Trying to identify in the last three to four years why their impoundment, their backwaters of the dam have, uh, degraded so significantly. Uh, and we also are obviously doing a lot of testing in Forest Creek and Sugar Creek. We're trying to pinpoint where the contaminants are coming in. Um, we're closely with Kirtis. Um, we have some ideas, um, as we, uh, move through the process. Also working very closely with the city of Alma. We filed a nearly three hundred thousand dollar grant on a feasibility study for the degradation of the impoundment. Uh, it's shallowing, it's, um, heavy in vegetation. And, um, they have burdened with the safety, um, confines of taking care of the State Street Dam. Projected out over twenty years, um, because they're required to update and upgrade the safety standards. Uh, they believe it's gonna cost them roughly a million dollars. There is no revenue stream to cover that cost other than general budget. Um, so that's a real dilemma for them. The feasibility study is really designed to look at, um, having an engineering firm help us understand what are the viable options to improving the impoundment to the river channel that backwater traditionally called the mill pond. So working very closely with them. We have continued our, um, rural septic assistance. We have now, um, finished with Riverdale. And that, that goes to the Riverdale Citizens Committee. We stole their model and hired, um, um, Mikey Van Horn as our septic liaison. We have now, um, covered Riverdale, Sumner, Elm Hall. Elwell is on deck this spring. We have now touched over three hundred homes on that our residents who live on or near the river. So that's really good news. We're proud of that. Our outreach efforts are getting much, much stronger. Um, that's why we're here, to keep you informed. We've appeared in front of the city, uh, St. Louis Commission as well as the Alma City Commission. We are also reaching out to the townships. We've done a septic smart program, um, that was at, uh, Seville and included a number of the township leadership. Um, we now are trying to move, um, collaboratively in with the farm community. I've met with Farm Bureau, both the state and local level. I've met with, uh, Michigan Egg Council recently, MSU Extension, as Jan referred to earlier. Um, as well as their MATE coordinators and the Dean Anderson, the Gresham Conservation District administrators on our board. So, um, we see the dean, um, pretty regularly. We have three Eagle grants currently, um, in Lansing that have not been, um, turned down or approved yet, so we're waiting on them. Um, two of them are, are just simple grants that update the watershed plan. The other is a capacity building grant. They're in the thirty thousand dollar range. The dam risk reduction grant is a two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar grant, very significant. And we're hopeful, um, in regards to that. Some good news. The good news is we're working and we found a lot of cooperation and collaboration with our township residents regarding the septic. Lumberjack Park and Riverdale are the cleanest parts of the river today, which is really encouraging and, and kudos to the, um, citizens of Riverdale in the, in that area. We test all the way from the headwaters in Macosta County all the way down to the dam in St. Louis, the Hydro Dam. And, uh, that is the cleanest area. Um, again, we know that, uh, a combination of livestock and septic, um, manure and feces are the contaminants. Um, we know where the E. coli comes from. Um, we just have to continue to work with our farm community, with our community, with our households out in the rural areas, um, to continue to turn the tide on this. Your grandkids, your kids, your grandkids, my grandkids, um, are not having the same opportunities with the river that we had. And it's also impacting property value along the, uh, river with households. It's, uh, absolutely, um, killing Alma's opportunity to develop the Brownfield property, uh, that is adjacent to the river. Um, St. Louis is also struggling in that regard because no one wants to invest millions of dollars into residential and commercial, um, development when you're, when you're looking at a, uh, an eight-month, um, swamp. So there's lots of struggles yet. We're still working on that. I would share with you that we are making progress. I, that's good news, but we, I met with Kevin Beeson a while back. And what I love about Kevin is he kind of tells it like it is. And, um, he simply said, you need a louder voice. You've got to align yourself with more like-minded organizations. We are doing that. As well as our township leadership, our county leadership, and our cities leadership. So we think we're moving in the right direction. My last thing I would share with you regards kids. We accepted a United Way challenge, uh, with our, in identified, um, if you're familiar with Shark Tank. They have a program on February twenty-second. Kids compete from Isabella and Gresham County in regards to picking a project and then trying to sell it to a group of judges. Our kids picked the project of trying to create, uh, trying to earn a scholarship to create, um, presentations for high school and middle school kids at Alma High School and Alma Middle School. They call themselves the Pine River Protectors. And they took it very seriously and they were fully funded at five thousand dollars. So that's really, um, exciting. The other good piece of news, and so we will begin that program through the summer, but we'll actually, the presentations will be ready next fall. The other thing we're doing with the R E S D and Paul Hungerford is that we are developing a four or five curriculum for Forest Hills Nature Center. So that our kids, um, as they visit, uh, Forest Hills, will also be educated regarding the watershed and the Pine River and the health and what are some things that they can do to help. If we don't, if our outreach doesn't get to the younger generations, we're gonna find that the greatest water resource in this county will be contaminated and, and more like a swamp than a, than a flowing river. So I appreciate your time. I would, I would take any questions that you have.
Well, Chuck, you came here tonight also with a request. You want to speak to that?
I do. Um, we have designed a, a funding program. We used to have a budget of fifteen thousand dollars. It now runs roughly fifty thousand dollars and the difference for that is that because we're writing grants, we're doing septic liaison work out in the county. Um, we are testing waters. Um, we pay roughly eight to ten thousand dollars every summer for Alma College interns, testing supplies and that whole process. Um, we also are doing research. We just, um, had finished a white paper, um, committed by two Alma College graduates, um, regarding the relationship between the State Street Dam and the Mill Pond. And what, what is happening there? What is the dynamic? And we also asked them to research other communities of similar size. So what we did is that we have, we have begun a campaign called the Friends of the Pine River. St. Louis, Alma, um, cities of both have both contributed twenty-five hundred dollars, which is the top commitment, um, towards this endeavor. Um, we've had a number of private citizens and businesses commit dollars as well. So we're trying to, um, not be, frankly, not be a totally voluntary organization like we were for seven out of the ten years we've been in existence. We need part-time people to do the work to move us forward. And it's a painful reality, but it is a reality. Um, it's hard to ask volunteers to go out and meet with people in the country near the river and get into, in regards to their septic systems. Um, it's hard to ask a volunteer to write a three hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, there's a hundred hours in that grant alone. So I think you know where I'm going. So we would greatly appreciate your consideration and becoming a part of our Friends Campaign. Last, uh, year in twenty-three, the fall of twenty-three, you committed three thousand dollars. Um, this year I would like to ask you to consider twenty-five hundred. I was thinking three thousand, but last time I gave five hundred to George just to get the grant, so. Just kidding, of course. But anyway, that's, that's, that is our ask. We hope that that will continue to help sustain us as we move forward and the response to this. We are the only organization in the county or the watershed that's trying to make an impact on changing the course of the Pine River. So, thank you much.
Does it all? Do I hear motion?
I have a motion that you give twenty-five hundred.
I'll second it.
And, uh, we've done this before and because of the nature of the ask, it always comes under a, a form of a contract. And Chuck has one for you to sign.
Of course he does.
I would ask them just one caveat if I could. Annie Sanders, the Executive Director of United Way, has provided us with a ten thousand dollar grant for any money, any contributions that come in during the month of March. So you can imagine if this were to pass and come to fruition, um, that twenty-five hundred becomes five thousand dollars. Thank you for your consideration.
Chuck, I have a couple of questions for you. One is, I'd like your phone number if you don't mind. There's some other questions for you, but I don't want to take up a lot of time here in this meeting today. So I would check, it's not very much, but put this charge as a twenty-five hundred also. You have to put a name on that. Um, I'll give you that, but I'd like your phone number. There's some, there's some questions in St. Louis about, along the river, but I'll call you and talk to you about it. And then also I have concern about one of the Great Lakes being polluted and how does that affect our area here? I know our Great Lakes are, we're the, we have the largest amount of fresh water. Is it in the world? In the world, here around Michigan. And one of those lakes is polluted. They think it's polluted.
You've raised two really important observations. The first one is, is that for the first time in a long time, people are very concerned about what's coming down through the watersheds of the Chippewa, the Pine and the Titibowase in Floyd de Segan Bay. That's a real concern because of what's happened in Lake Erie. The second thing that's very unique is that we were just contacted by Eagle and the EPA and they're now asking Alma College and the research that we've done in the past regarding water testing to start collaborating with, collaborating with the EPA and Eagle. That's very unusual. So something's up. That's very unusual, so something's up. There's a level of concern obviously, and it's about time.
Yeah, and I'd like to know too, when your meetings are, I might be able to get to one or two of your meetings this year. I'm trying to get all around.
We meet the second Thursday of each month, 7 o'clock at Alma Public Library.
Okay, that's easy, Alma Library.
We have, I would share with you that roughly a year ago, we had 386 dues paying members. We're down a little bit right now, some have moved, some have passed unfortunately. But we're still very, very healthy and a lot of folks between St. Louis, Alma, Mount Pleasant and the surrounding area that are involved.
Do you have a business card at all or?
I do, it's not my business card, but it's Healthy Pine River Card.
If you write your phone number on the back.
Absolutely.
And yeah, I'm real concerned about the water. I mean, it's a big issue and I'm concerned about. I want to say this in a nice way. You know, we were into a little bit of war in the Middle East and now they're threatening to come back over here and retaliation. And some of the things that they have mentioned that they will do is take and knock off our electricity. Contaminate our water, I mean, it goes on and on and on, all the different things they're gonna do. So my concern is, I think we have to do, we need to do. And I think if they do do that, I think they'll be very sorry because we've got somebody that's not gonna put up with all this crap. But anyway, anything I can do to help, if you got me go, any kind of work that you need extra volunteers, I have the time now that I can help.
Thank you, thank you, and I will give you your phone number right after the meeting, so.
And I'll give you this one too.
Okay, too much.
A motion by Tim, supported by Jan, to contribute $2,500 to the Healthy Pine River.
Roll call please.
And sign the contract.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number three, James Haas and Tom Clark.
Oh, Amy.
Guess that's Jamie instead of James.
Few things that we'd like to hand out to you guys before we begin, and I apologize, I don't believe in these, there are enough copies to cover everybody up here. But I do have five copies for the commissioners. Before we begin, I do want to just give you a little bit of forewarning, the last one that's coming around does have some pretty descriptive photos in it. If you're screening, should all please look at that with caution. So today, Tom Clark and myself as, or Sheriff Tom Clark and myself as the Director of Animal Control. In Grashit County have a few questions that we would like to place before the board for consideration. First off, we would like to have your support in taking our officers through firearm and sidearm training to further protect them. And we've presented, or we've made up a little bit of a presentation as to why we think that's relevant. Going hand in hand with that, we're also going to go into a little bit of detail about why it may be important to move animal control under the umbrella of the Sheriff's Department. So first and foremost, animal control officers play a very crucial role in maintaining the policies and safety of animal welfare. The responsibility span various tasks from investigating animal cruelty. Controlling stray population, responding to aggressive animals and protecting our community from said animals. And many other animal related issues. However, animal control officers or ACOs frequently find themselves in threatening situations where their safety and the safety of the public and the humane treatment of animals may be at risk or are at risk. Being able to protect not only the animals of this community, but the people of the community as well as ourselves from harmful situations should be a top priority. Sidearms can be an essential tool in some of these scenarios, ensuring that officers make it home safely to their families. The documents outlined in this paper is the key reasons why we believe animal control officers should be allowed to carry sidearms and under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department. This proposal seeks to highlight the safety, legal and operational benefits associated with the recommendation. Emphasizing how they will contribute to the effectiveness of the animal control unit and safeguarding both the public and our officers. Number one will be protection against animal control or against aggressive animals. Animal control officers often deal with aggressive or dangerous animals. Included in this, you'll want to look through the photos that I provided, there are. There is a news report and in the backside of this, there are four pictures that are attached, I'll go into details for what those are. Firearms provide a necessary tool for immediate protection when non-lethal methods such as a catch pole or control pole resist. Are unavailable or ineffective. Referencing 2016, an animal control officer in New York was attacked by an aggressive dog that had been abandoned in a local park. The dog became extremely aggressive when approached and unrestrained. The officer had no choice but to use a sidearm to stop the attack. Which otherwise could have led to severe injuries or death of the animal control officer. Reference of 2024 in Grashit County. Officer Haas, myself and Officer O'Boyle were dispatched to an aggressive dog at large on a resident's back porch. Arriving prepared, both of us with catch poles in hand. Both animal control officers were thankfully able to resist the dog on the first attempt. Restrain the dog on the first attempt, I apologize. Should a second attempt have been necessary at that point, that situation could have gone much differently. This dog, once on a catch pole, showed so much aggression, by the time that we got the dog loaded into the truck, it had broken multiple teeth. Had attempted to attack both animal control officers, the entire time that we were trying to load it, there was blood everywhere. The dog was lodged at our shelter and fulfilled its five day stray hold. No one came forward to claim this aggressive dog. During that entire five day stray hold, the dog was so aggressive, he was unable to be handled without the use of a control pole. And would have attacked the kennel and did attack the kennel each and every time either a dog or human walked by that kennel. This dog could have caused grave damage to an officer or a resident, had he not been caught on the first try, and thank God he was. Had he not been caught, animal control officers would not have been able to get back to their vehicle to the shotgun that we do have in our truck. In time to prevent the dog from full on attack. Just to paint the picture a little clearer, this was a dog that we caught with a catch pole while it was charging us. It was not a small dog, it was a very large dog and took two of us to handle. The pictures included in that back part of the final thing that I passed around are reference of a 2024 attack on an animal control officer. In Saginaw County, this was an officer that I did a ride along with, I know her personally, we have a good relation, working relationship. She is a hard worker and has lots of experience, has been trained correctly. This animal control worker, animal control officer was working in Saginaw County and responding to a dog at large. When the dog saw the animal control officer, he charged her and viciously mauled her. Her wounds covered her entire body, including her arms, legs and chest. She was finally able to climb on top of a car and radio for help, but she had nothing besides her catch pole to protect her. She was off work for three months and unable to work due to her injuries. Should she not have made it to a vehicle that was close, this could have been her life. It was, as it was, a dog bite and photos provided to you shows a very deep wound in her arm. The other bites on her body are inappropriate to show. Officers may respond to situations involving dangerous wildlife and large animals. Firearms allow officers to address threats swiftly, especially in cases that there are other control methods may be impractical. Reference again to a Grashit County, 2024, a large bull was able to escape from St. Louis Stockyards. This bull was ran on 46 all the way through St. Louis. He rammed vehicles and a police car and was a large threat to the residents of that city. Animal control was dispatched along with multiple city and county deputies. Animal control was able to dispatch the bull using a firearm. At a safe distance to keep ourselves and our community safe. Hence a reference that was used appropriately for the safety of our community. Animal control officers often work alone. We don't necessarily always buddy up, there's not always two of us. A lot of times there is only one, we have enough complaints to answer in our county, but we don't have that option most days. This increases our vulnerability to threats from both animals and people carrying firearms. Other is a means of self-defense to a potentially dangerous situation. When we may not be able to get back to our vehicles or our control poles. When dealing with some of those situations in our county or city, deputies are called to as well. For instances, homes where there has been known drug problems or people have a violent history and no regard for officer enforcing the law. At this point, animal control officers have no ability to know that type of situation that we're walking into. We have no access to lean or anything else to tell us what we're walking into before we walk into it. With combining animal control into the Sheriff's Department, we'll be open to getting further certifications. Like lean certification and training to help us handle these situations appropriately and safely. Some situations require animal control officers to enforce laws related to animal cruelty, neglect or abandonment. When enforcing these laws, sometimes people can become escalated. Especially in situations where officers or CPS may have already been or if drugs and alcohol had been involved. We do everything possible to de-escalate a situation. But on top, on a lot of these instances, if a person becomes escalated, our animal control officers are already standing on their front porch. We're away from our vehicle, we do not have access to what would be means of protection that we, the small amount that we do have currently. Sometimes we're even in their home already with the door shut behind us. We don't have access to get back to our trucks for any tools that may be able to help protect us. Should this situation become aggressive, we would have no ways of protecting ourselves and await a deputy backup. A sidearm would provide the necessary protection when engaging with individuals who may be armed and dangerous. Presence of firearms can also act as a deterrent to a person who has a known history of violence or mental illness. Officers carrying firearms help prevent these activities and uphold the law simply by our appearance. By being part of the Sheriff's Department, animal control officers gain access to greater authority, including the ability to execute warrants with our county deputies. Instead of having to stand outside while they clear the home before we go into investigate a crime related to the animal abuse or neglect. Again, referencing a 2024 case out of Grashit County, our animal control officers obtained a search warrant on a residence. And our deputies went with us as backup. During that time, the deputies looked at us and said, well, aren't you coming in with us too? Then he said, wait, you have no ways of protecting yourself while we clear the house. Which left them vulnerable to any dogs that were in that home because we weren't able to go in with them. Due to not having a way to protect ourselves, we were asked to stand outside. Thankfully, that situation again was not escalated, we were able to clear the home and do our search warrant and protect those animals that were in that home. As part of the Sheriff's Department, animal control officers benefit from streamlined coordination with other law enforcement agencies, including local police, wildlife authority and state and federal agencies. This ensures more effective response to dangerous or high-risk situations involving animals. Officers under the Sheriff's Department receive the same extensive training, equipment and resources as other law enforcement officers, deputies included. This includes training on firearms, defense tactics and legal proceedings, ensuring that animal control officers are adequately prepared for that range of situation. Specifically, our current sheriff has previously been an animal control officer for close to 30 years. Since Tom has stepped into his role as sheriff, he has been available to mentor our new young ACO crew on an as needed basis. Never has he questioned our decisions we have made or how we've handled a situation. He has been our greatest mentor as a person in his position would hope to be. Having a Director of Animal Control under the sheriff would simply be similar to having a lieutenant or sergeant also under the sheriff. A director would still be responsible for the day-to-day decisions, accounting, budgeting and organization of the shelter and other ACOs and all things that a director is currently responsible for. The benefit of animal control as a whole under the Sheriff's Department is the training the Sheriff's Department could provide that we have not had available to us previously. The relationship with our deputies who we already work with on a close basis on a lot of situations. And the protection under the Sheriff's Department. This structure promotes efficient decision-making, coordination and especially in time-sensitive situations. Associating animal control officers and the Sheriff's Department enhances the public's trust and authority and professionalism. The legitimacy conferred by the department ensures greater cooperation from the public and other law enforcement agencies promoting community safety. Incorporating sidearms into our animal control officer toolkit and positioning them alongside the department will significantly enhance their ability to perform their duties safely and effectively. Firearms offer essential protection and enable officers to respond to high-risk situations involving dangerous animals, public safety concerns and potential threats for safety. Additionally, being under the Sheriff's Department provides these officers with resource, training and support, ensuring a cohesive, organized and efficient approach to animal control and public safety. This proposal recommends that the board consider adapting the suggestion of both myself, the Director of Animal Control. As well as Sheriff of Grashit County to allow animal control officers to carry firearms and operate under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department. Reinforcing their critical role in the safeguarding of both animals and our community. This presentation is structured to ensure a clear understanding of the rationality behind these recommendations. And their potential impact on improving public safety and the overall effectiveness in control. So we also went through and we contacted multiple counties. Most of them in the mid, slightly upper Michigan, slightly lower Michigan. We had 33 counties, you'll see, I don't have quite all of them listed on there, I apologize, I ran out of time. But in addition to the counties that are on that list, Vamberen County, Cass County, Alpena County. Lenawee Mount County, Hillsdale County, Monroe County, Alligan County. Iron County, Ogama County, Mackinac County, Sheboygan County, Washington County, Marion County and Calhoun are all under the Sheriff's Department. And all of these deputy animal control officers are able to carry. You'll see that there's some of them listed in there that may be still under the administration, but are also available to carry at that point as well. All of these officers are trained side by side with the deputies of the county and they are certified as the deputies would be as well. So the other third thing I had turned into you guys is just an article on one of the officers that was attacked near Saginaw County. The three photos or four photos attached to the back are the Saginaw officer that I did my ride along with, that just happened a few months ago. Like I said, these are ones that you may not want to look through all of them, but some of her wounds are very, very deep and close to very vital parts of her body. So I will let Tom add a few things and then we will proceed.
So good evening, everybody, Tom Clark, Sheriff of Grashit County. And so I'm pleased to let you know that animal control has my full faith in coming under the umbrella of the Sheriff's Office. I spent 28 years in animal control and some of you know, I was able to carry back in the day. When I first started out, I was able to carry a sidearm for 16 years. I ran against Doug Wright, who ultimately won sheriff. And basically about two months into that, he no longer would certify us to carry a sidearm. So the county seen about 28 years ago, the need for this to happen. Unfortunately, without being underneath the Sheriff's Office and not being trained, not being certified, not going through the training. I couldn't, I wasn't allowed to carry a sidearm anymore. So even back then, we were allowed to carry. That also continued through Sheriff Morris because he didn't want the added risk of animal control underneath his office. Me coming from there, it's gonna be a great fit. As you are well aware of, in my short career or in my long career. We've gone through nine different administrators, going on our 10th administrator with an average stay of basically 2.8 years. We've only had three sheriffs in that same timeframe. Sheriff Berisi, Sheriff Wright, Sheriff Morris. And so we have a lot more stability at the Sheriff's Office. With this being more of a law. You know, with it being more of a law enforcement position, more of a law enforcement job. It makes more sense to bring it underneath the Sheriff's Office. In the state of Michigan, you can either fall under three different categories for animal control. You can have the Sheriff's Office, you can have the administrator, or it can fall underneath the Health Department. So it falls underneath that umbrella of those three offices. With having those nine different administrators, I've had nine different sets of agendas in our office. And each one of you guys know that, I know we have some elected officials here and each time we get a new administrator, there's new directives and everything else. This keeps it more common, this keeps it focused and this also gives them more tools in their tool bag to help. With being underneath our office, they're gonna have access to guns, tasers. Report writing, which we have our own report writing system right now, which they don't have currently, so. Report writing, which we have our own report writing system right now, which they don't have currently. So with that. The deputies can see what they're doing. They can see what the deputies are doing. They can look up an address before they even go out there and what, you know, what was happening out there? Was there an assault type of a crime? Was there maybe some CPS involved? Was there drugs? Was there alcohol or anything like that? So it gives them the access to be able to to go to that screen, pick it up, see what's happening and be able to make a good choice. The biggest thing that they're going to have access to, which state of Michigan changed this a few years ago. We used to have access to lean, which is a law enforcement information network. About five, six, seven, eight years ago, state of Michigan took that away from us. And so the only time an animal control officer has access to lean is when they're when they're underneath the sheriff's office. So this would greatly enhance their tools and their tool bag. Up-to-date training. They've already been through some training already. I've allowed them to go through our training. They're actually going to be going through CPR training here this week. They went through TASER training. They went through defensive, some defensive tactics. And so, you know, I've already allowed them to to come under our umbrella a little bit. Those are just tools that they need to have that was never allowed for them to have before. They deal with the exact same people that we deal with. The only difference is they're unarmed. We're armed to the teeth. If you guys look at any of our outer vests and everything else. I mean, you know, we've got three magazines on. We got numerous other tools that we can use. And they go in there just like that. They wear basically about the same patch, the same insignia that we wear. Most people, they see that uniform, they see that badge and, you know, they automatically think it's the police. They don't, they don't take the time to read. That it is, you know, animal control officer. What my, what my plans are with them still being underneath, with them being under our umbrella, though, they're still their own department. They still are going to be applying for their own budget. Jamie Haas is going to be the director. I'm just giving them the tool that they need to advance in their careers. To make them as safe as possible and to allow them to do their job as efficiently as possible. If if there is ever a perfect time to do it, this is the perfect time. We're in the middle of a of another administration search. You've just had a a director that came off a twenty-eight-year career at animal control. There's not a better time to have, we have three young ACOs here with Jamie's got a year in. Lindsay's got almost a year and Nathan just Nathan just started just a couple of months ago. So this is a perfect time for that mentorship to happen. This is a perfect time for them to come underneath that umbrella. We already have all the policies, procedures and training modules in place. We don't have to rewrite the book on this. We already have all the policies for guns, for tasers, for OC spray and everything else. We already have the the training for defensive tactics. We already have it. What you do, you know, when you enter a dangerous situation. So these guys will, these guys will have the the most up-to-date training that they've ever had. Something that So they've got my full blessing. And like I said, Jamie will still be running. Just going to put it underneath, if if allowed, put it underneath the umbrella of the sheriff's office. So that way they can get the best possible training possible.
Have you guys ran any of this, our prosecutor's back in here now? Has any, have you ran any of this past because of the Two laws and Obviously, the laws you follow as an animal control officer are going to change, being under the umbrella of the sheriff's office. I guess since you're here, hopefully you're not putting you on the spot. Have they talked with you at all? What are your thoughts, concerns, if you have any?
Originally talked to Jamie and loved the idea of being under the sheriff's department. I know that seems to be an absolute obvious that I think what has to happen and maybe to send out is just to reveal the policy. Twenty months on point, there was a policy that county employee couldn't carry a gun in a county vehicle. That may need to be tweaked to allow it to cover animal control officers at the discretion of the sheriff. And at one point, since they were emco certified, I don't know whether they also have to have CPS. Do they have their their own CPS? Okay, so there was then
That was one of our requirements of hiring everybody. We we've actually have kept that in place as part of our hiring. That they're able to obtain a CPL. So that, you have a good point. And that was every, all three of us.
All of us.
All of them, you know, have had CPLs, so.
I'm only just making sure the rest of the county policies then include. And I want to choose my words carefully because I know it's not certification. They're not certified.
And that's, and that's how the sheriff's departments that responded back to us, you know, made that clear. They're not emco certified. These are not, these are not full-fledged deputies. They only have power when it comes to animal laws. They don't have, they don't have all the powers that a deputy would have or an officer would have.
Give them an arrest.
Correct, correct. They would still, they would still call a deputy if if they need to arrest somebody. They would still call a deputy for for arrest powers and to transport.
So you're you're talking not only to allow our animal control officer to carry sidearms, but you want, you want to take over the everyday operations of the
No, but I don't want to take over everyday operations.
That's where I'm kind of confused.
That's Jamie's baby with falling under the umbrella of the sheriff's office.
But she's going to answer to you on everyday operations.
Only, only if there is a An operation that I need to get involved with, just the same with an administrator.
You you know, you just talked about we're going to need, we're getting a new administrator. So how does that work with a new, any administrator? Are they going to still have input into the animal control? Or are you, I'm getting confused here.
No, they they will not. The new administrator will not.
So you're taking on everyday operations of of the animal control.
No, that's still the director. The director is taking on operations, but I am just there for, I am just there for if a A citizen makes a complaint that goes above Jamie Haas's head, just the same as as an administrator would. They, I would call up Jamie, hey, what's going on? And then that would be it. You guys would be the ones still setting her budget. She would answer technically to me.
There you go.
But I'm not taking on their day-to-day operations.
No, but you're going to be responsible.
I will be responsible for.
I'm trying to get that out of you.
Will the employees be CLP if they are currently G E L C?
They will stay probably G A L C.
Under the sheriff, how how I can be
I'm I'm just giving them the powers that they need to be able to have lean access. To be able to carry a sidearm, to be able to have the training that they need to have in order to do that. Just like I was before in the day. Before that power unfortunately was taken away.
Obviously, I'm very supportive of the training aspect is huge to me. Kind of has always been a mystery as to, you know, somebody who drives around with a uniform that looks very similar. Didn't train with us. But with that being said, it sounds like you've already upped the training game with what you're doing already, which kudos to you guys. Because obviously, training is very near and dear to me and it's very near and dear to the citizens of this county. Because just knowing that you're going through first aid training and CPR training. Sometimes you're the closest vehicle.
Absolutely.
And to know that you, you know, have the the proper training and maybe at some point in time will be able to carry AEDs or whatever. Would be a dream come true because then you have another set of them out there in the public to help save, potentially save someone's life. I love all of that kind of stuff with you guys being able to do that. Lean is an important aspect as well, and the only way you're going to get that is through a law enforcement agency. So I understand the law enforcement information network as well. As far as the handgun thing, I'm going to be, you know, a devil's advocate. I trained firearms and As a firearm instructor in my previous world, we always trained our firearms. Or we always trained our animal control at that agency. They only carried long guns at the time, but that was many years ago now that I was involved in that.
Now they carry sidearms.
Ingham's not there yet.
Ingham County is.
I don't think they're there yet. They're, they've brought it before the board, but I don't think it's been, the board of commissioners hasn't approved it yet. No.
Was it JD from Ingham or is he from Eaton? He might be from Eaton.
Yeah, and it gets mistaken all the time. But anyhow. Because I actually, I I talked with them as well. Their sheriff is very supportive of it. It's just a matter of they got to get through their board of commissioners as well. So just so I understand from talking to you, Tom, and the firearm aspect of it is everyone will carry a CPL.
Correct.
Purchasing of the weapons will be, they will be a county-owned firearm, right? We have a standard that's set. So everybody's going to be carrying the same.
Carrying the same as what we do.
Okay, same ammo.
Absolutely. Nine millimeters, same as us.
Same ammo. So you're, because that stuff all has to be tested and evaluated to make sure that it's safe to be, to do the job at hand. You're, you talked about TASER. So they've already been TASER trained or you're going to try and get them TASER?
They actually went through our TASER training. That was part of our 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 training day. They spent eight hours with us at the library and went through that and actually qualified or no, they did not qualify with them. They It's not too expensive, so.
So that's something you're going to explore as well as getting them?
Yes.
Okay. Do they currently wear body cameras or not?
They do not.
They don't. Okay. Is there been, because of you're adding a level of liability with these, has that been something you've Talked about, looked into, cost of what?
We actually, we actually are going and talking with GTAC tomorrow here. Matt, myself, Lieutenant Leonard, and we're going over the body cams with them and car cams as well. So if if ultimately they are brought under under us, they will have body cams as well.
Because to me, that's a huge part of, I know it's a huge part of prosecutor's world as well, is what that footage shows. I mean, ninety-nine point half percent of the time is the best thing you have, the best evidence you've got is
Absolutely.
Live footage of what happened right there. When, I mean, you've provided this list and and additional, obviously, I know several of these people on here. I know Sheila, you had talked was, was it Saginaw had it and took it away? Did you ever get any like why they took that away?
Said it was a hot button issue that they have and it was in their best interest to take that away.
Because then I see this happened to a Saginaw officer, you know, so then I'm like You know what I mean? That, because I was the officer sitting in my patrol car. Waiting for the animal control officer to show up because, you know, we couldn't get out of our patrol cars without, we'd had to shoot and kill a dog. That was our only recourse because, I mean, there was two of us there basically trapped in our patrol vehicles waiting for animal control to be able to come there and dart. That's how they did that.
I just had one other thought. On multiple county levels, they may just have, you know, when you brought up the body cams and the car cams, it had to be something that they would recommend. I'm just trying to think of other things that, you know, they would like to recommend, you know.
I'm sure they
With the other officers, you know, the training, that kind of thing. So maybe just
Because you guys currently are carrying, you're the one who killed the bull in St. Louis, correct? So I mean, it won't be unusual for us to use firearms. I don't know why. Your your undersheriff shot the one early after I was in St. Louis, but we had a similar situation. So that's kind of a real thing. When I was reading that, I'm like. You know, in a short period of time that I've been back working in Grasha County, whether it was the undersheriff or as a commissioner, we've had two. That were, you know, animals that were domestic animals that got loose and once
And one of Dale and then Deputy Harless a month ago just shot one as well.
Oh, really? And St. Louis again?
Yep, St. Louis.
Shot the other one got loose at the, okay, it's stuck here. So that's a, that's what, three, four we're talking about here in a in a relatively short
Yes.
Period of time. And will you guys still continue to carry the shotguns in the
Absolutely, yes.
All right. And that will allow them to train with our emco certified firearms instructors?
Absolutely.
As well.
I've already talked to our instructors, Ted, Alex, Tanis, and they're all on board. They didn't understand why we weren't doing it a long time ago. A lot of times too, we we are their their closest backup, you know, to a deputy. When that call comes out, most of the time. A lot of the times, we're only a couple of miles down the road, you know, and and they have another deputy that's streaming in, you know, from across the county. We can be there to help and assist, you know, being as we're going through the same training, same protocols and procedures. You know, so it's added benefit as well to our office.
Are you also having as much trouble with a resident that's been on drugs as you are with dogs at the same place? What do you do about that resident? You, do you take them in or?
No, they, like on a resident, what we do is call for backup. Call for a deputy or an officer. They're in the city. We would, we would call for that backup, which we would continue to do that as well. You know, it's it's in the best interest of officer safety to have that additional backup there to assist. You never know what's going to come out of that house.
It's, times have really changed and I know what you mean about dogs. Because I've had incidents where, and it's so startling to, you know, to be out someplace. And all of a sudden you're facing a dog that's violent. So
This is just an extreme. I mean, they, you know, have been trained to be able to to retreat and back up. I mean, that's the first thing you want to do. You you don't want, you don't want to have to put down an animal or anything like that. It just gives them that extra tool in their tool belt, you know, to where they can safely retreat, reprocess, rethink. You know, but if they have to, they can
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't blame the dog. I blame the person who owns that dog. Because when you buy a dog or you get a dog. It's a baby usually, and the next thing you know, it's grown up and it's vicious. Would that be, am I right or wrong on that?
It depends on the situation, I think. Sometimes that's accurate.
What do you want us to do tonight? Just take the information or do you want us to act on it?
I would, I would like to act. I would like to act.
So you're looking for a twofold? You want, you you're you're looking for the sheriff to have the You know. The animal control under your, these other counties.
Correct. That's exactly.
The sheriff. And then the second portion is to allow them to carry.
Correct.
If they're underneath my umbrella, though.
It's been too different because they're two vastly different things.
If they're, if they're underneath my office, so then as of the elected official, I'd be able to, you know. Have them, have them carry. So I think it's just basically just to put them underneath my
I should have it in one, so it's, we don't need a separate one for the firearms.
I think if we just put everything under his control, that automatically takes care of the firearm situation.
Does anyone have any further discussion, questions, concerns?
So when we talk about firearms, one of the biggest things I'll be talking about is how they are
Nathan, we, hold on just a second. If you're going to speak, can you please come?
I know the big, big issue and the big public issue is they always wonder whether or not we're safe with the firearms, if we're confident within the firearms. I know Jamie's an avid firearm user, whether it's hunting and she has a CPL. I know Lindsay as well hunts in firearm. And I did five years with the Navy. I was a firearms instructor, a range safety officer and a CPR instructor while inside the Navy. I know about anything you could talk about firearms. I could tell you every single range, how to take them apart, put them back together. Whether it's use, I've handled well over fifteen thousand individuals on firearms over five years. So these firearms are very important. And when I got hired and I spoke to Tom, I spoke to Jamie as well, and I was confused on how come we can walk into someone's home. Who is violent, which we've been to, an individual that we've been to. But we walked in without protection. When she said the door closes, don't know what's going to happen. You know, and we all have families too. She has kids, Lindsay has kids, Jamie has kids. I have a wife and family as well. So I know a big thing to look at is we all are confident in firearms and benefits of training is just going to make us more confident within those firearms. And it's definitely something to understand. It's not something new to us. We all know firearms very well. We know that the uses and it's a last-ditch effort, but it's better than being trapped. But it's better than being trapped in the car by yourself, pinned down by a couple dogs. We've had some big dogs come in in the last couple months, hundred twenty, hundred thirty pound dogs. Back at turn, but that's all I have for you guys. Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, I motion that, oh. The animal control of go under your department, the sheriff department.
Support.
Any more comment? Moved by Tim, supported by Steve, that we allow the animal control to be under the support, under the umbrella of the sheriff's department.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Sapsy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Thank you. We we greatly appreciate that.
For bead grant letter, you can, if he has a money.
Okay, let me get to it. All right, um. Last week, I was at the the Wheeler Township meeting and uh. There was a presenter there, uh Eric Frederick, um. He has a internet company. Um, that puts in fiber optic and he's out of Hemlock, Michigan. And they have these grants out, they're called bead grants from the state of Michigan right now. And he's already got permission to come into Wheeler Township and 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 a limited basis to put in fiber optic. And of course, we've been, always been talking about, what can we do to help the county residents get more fiber optic? And he was uh asking them to say, well, if we, if he was to get able to get this bead grant, he would be able to do a lot more fiber optic than the north. He's talking about the 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 northeast section of Wheeler Township. And uh, so he, he was asking them for a letter of support. And then one of the trustees, while I was sitting there, asked, would I be interested in having the county, bringing it to the county and having them letter of support? Well, I thought it was just a natural thing for us to do because we've been pushing this uh fiber optic. As long as we can, and this is simply a letter of support that'll go with that bead grant uh for this uh company. Uh, and he's probably got the name somewhere. Uh, yeah, it's uh Lake Net, Lake Net, Lake Net, yeah, Lake Net, they're 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 out of Hemlock. Uh, they've been doing a lot of it. They got it in Hemlock. They've started to come east. They say they're a little bit into Gresham County. This would help them a lot to do that, so. Basically, I'm putting forward a, just a a letter of recommendation uh from the County Board of Commissioners. That he can be able to attach to his application. And I would, I would so moved that we'd adopt that.
Or.
Moved by George, supported by Steve, to uh. Send a letter showing our support for. Internet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Letter. Next up, D T E decommission agreement. Then you're packed there. It's very long, basically. What they're doing is redoing the bond for the Polaris Wind Energy. And we did. Need to go along with the decommission.
If you guys read all this, you'll realize this actually should have been done last year. Um, we're, yeah, and this, this is supposed to be read in every five years. Yeah. It got missed somehow, so this, this needs to be, to get this thing updated, because if you. Read the old one and you read the new one and you see the differences in the amount of money, it's, it's significant.
For fourteen million eight hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah. It's your number per wind turbine.
It's gone dramatically, yeah.
Yeah, and so I don't know how we put this on our radar, you know, we're we're doing this. If we approve this in March of of twenty.
Yeah.
Five.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna be looking at twenty thirty, this is gonna need to be.
We do as we, we hold the bond here at the department, the uh, the letter, if you will, there's a bond available.
If they want us to miss it the next time, I don't know how there's a, you know, really there's a way with it.
They have to.
Y'all have to be reelected again. Well, there'll be other people on it, so.
These have to go back to 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 a lawyer, which is our lawyer Fahy, and he never got it.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the problem was. They they they, they didn't do their due diligence at D T E to get it to Fahy.
Mm-hmm.
And Fahy didn't have it on his radar, but now that, it all, it just got mixed up. But anyway, we're making it right.
Yep.
Um, did the very first wind turbine go in, go to?
Two thousand and twelve.
Love or something.
I think two thousand and twelve.
Those were erected like.
Was in North.
About every five years?
Hmm. There, for every, for every wind farm, there is a separate commissioning. Each one has a different, and this is just for the.
This is for the.
Yeah, but each, each farm, as it's called, uh, has a decommissioning bond, which. Within that bond, it it creates a fund that allows it when those come obsolete, if you will, they have to be torn down. It gives enough money to have those successfully torn down and all the way. That's what that money is basically there for. They tear it all the way down to the foundation. The foundation is five feet in the ground. They take the pedestal off and they backfill that with with topsoil.
Have to be able to air hammer or chip away the concrete so that there's a layer of soil that they can.
It's five, they gotta be five feet a layer there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Of soil over the top, so that basically you won't remember that they were there.
It's all gone.
All the infrastructure, the cabling.
Is supposed to come out of the ground. But hopefully, I won't be a commissioner then.
All right, I saw a move that we approved, um. The five-year updated amount. What's that?
It's presented in.
As presented. Yeah. In this packet from Gresham. And it is the Polaris Farm. It is.
Yeah.
They're actually named, and here's the Polaris uh decommissioning agreement, so I saw a move that we. Update or accept the updated um decommissioning um paperwork as presented for the Polaris decommission.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, he seconded by Jan to accept the decommissioning agreement with, for the Polaris Wind Energy LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion carried. Okay, next up, opioid advisory steering committee. And Liz was here, she was talking about that. This is a, a suit against the companies that were prescribing too much Oxycondo.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they've been forced to give money back and Gresham County's share will be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for eighteen years.
Yep.
And. They have uh law enforcement, schools and the courts, and they also want a commissioner to be on this committee. And I would like to appoint Tim Gay for this committee.
You need a motion or?
Yeah, with motion would be good.
So move that we appoint Tim Gay to the um decom, or the opioid fund. To the opioid funds, yeah. I'm sorry, to the opioid fund task force that was created for Gresham County.
I'll second that.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan, to nominate Tim to serve on the opioid advisory steering committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It sounds like, I mean, Sheriff's on that group, uh, there was Alma, Alma P D, I don't say, St. Louis P D, um. I don't think, State Police, I don't think Breckinage Chief was on that.
Well.
R E S D is on it.
Health.
Yeah, mental health.
Board of Health.
Yep, everybody's, it's headed up by Liz from the. The health department, yeah, board of health, so yeah, you got, there's a lot of people on that board. I think it's a really good thing.
You'll have fun.
Okay, we've done the airport meeting already, so.
And make a motion that we would suspend the regular board meeting and go into our finance meeting.
Support.
Motion by George, supported by Steve, to suspend the regular meeting and go into the, Tim, pardon me.
You really got us confused, confused.
Go into the finance committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, motion carried. George?
Okay, let me get back, I'm gonna get my stuff around here. There's a dog on there. There we go. First of all, you got your cash balances. As you'll see, um, everything is tracking uh normally. There isn't anything that uh would be standing out. Uh. We will be seeing that hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of the court, of the, it's ARPA money is what it is. Uh, that would be starting to get paid out here, uh. On a pretty, pretty regular basis, so that should go down to nothing, I would think, within the next twelve months. Um, the Zalinko tax front is, looks good, and the general fund is at budget, so. If you have any other questions, I'll write them down and we'll get with Mary Ann, because she, the one that pulls us together for me. If not, we'll move on. Okay, February cash check register?
Let me look at.
State police, what are those for? Again, I believe we've talked about in the past. I don't recall. The Michigan State Police, there's one for two forty and one for twenty-two eleven. I just. Oh, it's C P L stuff, right?
Okay.
Slightly.
Okay. I wanted to be, yeah, what that, what we're paying them for.
Yeah, if I don't know the answer, I could, I'll have to write it down and get.
I'm looking it up right this second.
Good.
C P L's, January, February.
I don't have any questions.
Interiors of, I, Neville.
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 I just put carpeting down as the commissioner on engine.
E C three. It's our computer tech.
T.
Yep, I T's. Even Michigan sixty-five.
Let me look that one up, Tim. Is that what, were you asking, you want me to look it up?
Well, I I don't, it's big chunks.
State of Michigan, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah, give me just a second.
There, there also is a two hundred and twenty-three thousand state.
Well, there's a lot of State of Michigan's in there. I- is there a vendor code at all?
Yeah, there's a lot of. State of Michigan.
Well, let's see, there are taxes or. Tax, what am I gonna say? Courts. Paying State of Michigan for any of that stuff?
Pay them for notary fees, I just saw one of those.
I think I, other thing I can think of, we pay the State of Michigan. As we.
We pay them our taxes.
Yes.
For payroll purposes. Um, looks like twenty-four thousand was district court month end.
I say it's district court stuff. Usually court stuff that, the grants and stuff that go through us.
We take care of that, um, we put that into the accounts payable. It's monies that have to go to the state, the district court has collected.
Yeah.
What about L R E engineers and surveyors, twenty-eight?
That would be, uh, that would be Bernie's, Bernie, um, Barnes's.
The drain commissioner.
Uh, but uh. Drain commissioner, I'll get it out.
It would be accurate, engineering, please.
Other questions for George?
And then we go, we got the revenue expenditures report. You put them all in there from November. We've had them. Uh, up through January and February would be the one we haven't looked at yet, if you wanna look at that one, but they're all there for your review. Uh, there's usually not much question in there. Do you have any questions?
Nothing really jumps out to me.
No, our budgeting, budgeting is going very well. Percentages are.
Just are all spot on.
We're, we're, we're doing a good job and and Mary Ann has uh caught on quickly of what we need and. So, um, I'm pretty pleased with her. I'm, I just have to sit with her and understand the way she does it, because she does a little. You know, there's a different ways to come to the same outcome, and I have to understand how she's at that point. I am, I am not a finance, a finance, what do you call CPA. It gets confusing. But anyway. And if there is any other questions, I'll turn it over to the treasurer.
Hello, everybody. My usual reports, um, as you can see, the interest numbers on investments went down a little bit, four to five points in each. For each place, but also we had a short month. February is our short month. It's two or three days shorter, and you would not. Believe how much difference two or three days can make when you're talking about interest on investments, so that. That's uh, that explains all of that. I mean, I looked into it because I thought, well, that went down more than I thought it would, but.
Right.
But that's why, that is why. And then our bank transfers, nothing, nothing uh really stood out to me on that for February. Uh, unless anybody saw anything that they had any questions about, I didn't have any. Um, and then our receipt distribution report, that's simply the report that I run that shows where all of the different monies that comes into the county. Because we take care of all county monies, um, that's where it's all distributed to. That's, that's the line items we put it into when it comes into our office, so that's just a breakdown of what that.
Probably the new chart of accounts had an effect on.
It is, yep, that's been, we tried to do a lot of um. Preventive before it came in, so that, you know, to change those numbers in the, in the places that we put the money in, because we've got a lot of them that are already set up. And we just pull them in, and we tried to do a lot of that beforehand. There was a little bit afterwards, but most of it went pretty smoothly, actually. Um, and then we, um, we have the conversion chart, which is very nice, because you can go in and search the old number and it will take you to what the new number is, so.
Yeah.
Really good.
Pretty well settled up with all the townships now.
We have, um, we've gotten everything sent out, if we've gotten their final database. We've actually certified five. But we've got, we do all the villages, you know, separately, things. Yep, but uh, yeah, we're, we're on a really good. Yep, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're on a really good track and we've already completely certified five.
How is it looking for taxes being paid to Lincoln?
Um, I think it's going to be a little bit more than last year was because we've got the nine-one-one village that's been added. So, um, it, it's usually about the same, but this should be probably, like I said, a little bit more because of the nine-one-one. We're usually in the, um, two to two and a half range annually. But we don't ever pay out until we get everybody settled because-
You gotta settle everybody out.
Yeah, to make sure that everything-
Somebody crosses the line.
That's right. And everything, um, adds up when everybody's information is in there, because if you start paying out before that, it just-
We shouldn't have paid it because it's over here.
Right.
Some water?
So.
Can you go get some water?
No, I think I- So, anybody have any questions about anything? Nothing?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't have any questions, I don't. Well, we came to the end of our, or, motion that we go back.
Get some water here. You want some water?
Yeah.
That's been good, thanks.
I say most people back with the, with the intent of approving the bills.
I, I second. George, supported by Tim, to go back into our regular meeting with the purpose of paying our bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Paying our bills.
I can't just give a little update on, uh, Amy Sell, Yo and Yo. Do you want me to do that now? Um, just so everybody is aware, um, we had, what was the last meeting? That we had approved, um, contracting with Yo and Yo, Amy Sell to, for the search for the, um, new interim administrator. I spoke with her several different times. Sent out an email, but I, with the responses I got, I sent that back to her, what, uh, what we were- It, it's, it's a beginning for the process. They have to have something to post. So that's where information was sent out there. Um, we will see what we get back. Um, you know, they, they have no idea what responses they're going to get, you know what I mean? But hopefully they are-
It's all been sent out now, right?
They were starting the process. So there's lots of places they post.
Yeah.
Too. They were starting that process, I believe, last year.
Okay.
Um, I have not heard from her this week at all. Mail or text.
Our, our next meeting is April first.
Yes, April first, yeah.
Any other comments?
A move, we adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
By Tim, supported by George.
You got, you got a lot of work done. We did it at a good amount of time.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. We've taken a look at that email that I sent you and I'll make sure it's working well.
I, I sent it since we've done the board.